Hello. Oh, my name is Ellen. Many meetings are ordered. First thing on the agenda is Happy New Year to everyone. Okay, 2018 is gonna be a good one.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. First thing on the agenda is to approve the November 2nd, 2017 planning commission minutes. Hopefully, out of minutes, time to work these over. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as a stand?
Second.
All in favor? Um, do we have a call? Yes. Correct. Okay. Brian.
I think I have to stand in the living room here.
You can, you don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Steve. Oliver Wilson.
Aye.
Eric Holman. Early. That's me because I was out for a little. Okay. That is great.
They're approved.
That case of motion carries and the minutes are approved as soon after. And we move on. Staff support, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It is the first meeting of the new year. I can report we had 155 single-family residential permits last year. A little bit over what we estimated, which is always a good thing. I don't think it's necessarily going to slow down. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to discuss a preliminary design for a new residential subdivision. I have a draft of a new residential subdivision, small 20, 25 lots, big lot subdivision. In preliminary review at this time, I am in preliminary discussions with at least one other location for a residential subdivision. I know the properties have been sold, so at least three residential things moving pretty quickly, it looks like. I have a meeting Monday on a potential small commercial project, potentially on the south end of town on 169. I have had three phone conferences with two different engineers associated with the Smithville Project potential tenants. From the conversation I had, they didn't disclose who, but they were disclosing what they needed to do to get their submittals ready when this thing was ready to go. So apparently there are things getting ready to move up on the hill. I am also aware that it appears from the last email I saw from MoDOT that they are real close to finalizing the entrance plans. They have to do a MoDOT-designed entrance for the subdivision at Smithville Marketplace as it relates to hospital drive and alignment and how all that, all this engineering stuff over my head. But it looks like their comments are down to just a couple of small issues. So that's been the bugaboo of where everything is. Add on top of that a little problem with the lack of a document showing we have a hospital drive as a city street, but we'll get that fixed too. And it looks like in about a week, we'll see a grading permit to start the grading work on Smithville Marketplace. So that's moving forward. As it relates to the transportation master plan, we have five RFQs that were submitted, or submitters for the RFQ. All of them were highly experienced. I was a little nervous when the discussions were, or when the bid was still out because I had calls from firms from as far away as Los Angeles, California, and Manhattan, New York. So I was a little nervous that we were gonna have tons of them because I had several meetings with folks here from the region. We have, like I said, we have five of them. All of them are highly experienced. It's gonna take me a while with all the things going on to go through those and get them boiled out. With the RFQ process, it is not a, they didn't give us any dollars, we don't know the numbers, because we'll negotiate them once we reach a consensus on who are we, who are we gonna go with. The RFQ actually laid out the percentages of each factor of what we're gonna base our decisions on. And it was 35% on the qualifications of the group or groups, 30% on the project approach, and 30% on, I don't have my note, on the other portion of it. Oh, the timeline and deliverables, that kind of stuff. So once we get the project listing figured out a little better, we'll come up with those numbers. The timelines proposed are anywhere from seven to 12 months. The median would be 11 and a half months, thereabouts. We have two 12-month proposals, 11-month proposal, a nine-month, and a seven-month proposal. All of them similarly situated, all of them have multiple public meetings, all of them have separate stakeholder meetings, and all of them have separate reports to this committee, commission during the process. So they're all kinda the same. It's now down to when I start making calls on the references. They make reference to whatever project it is, we've gotta figure out whether they're good, bad, or otherwise. And we will, once that process is done, and we get the rank, ranking, if we can get them down to a clear number one through all that process, we have to take that to board and get the board to approve the ranking so that we can begin the negotiations, because it would be foolhardy to go through the negotiations and then the board say, "That's not who we want you to negotiate with." So we're gonna get the board to approve it, do the negotiation, bring the proposed draft contract back to the board for them to thumbs up or thumbs down on. So all of them, all of these projects cost roughly the same amount from all of the same bidders. I did a little research before we put this out, where the dollar numbers would be based upon our scope. I know roughly where we're gonna be, and they all are in the same, I'm confident are gonna be in the same ballpark with us on that. So once we get that done, we'll be able to start. The first thing will be a staff meeting to kind of give them the data, the stuff we have, and then they're gonna come to one of our meetings, either the February meeting or the March meeting, depending on when the decision's made. They're gonna have to come and start the public information process. So that's gonna be the most critical element, is the public involvement, so.
So who's doing the rankings?
What do you mean?
Who's doing the rank, who's ranking the applicants?
That'll be staff, me, Mica, and we'll have our street guys looking at it, so we'll...
So it seems to me that the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, would be involved in that process.
Wasn't, wasn't the planning, it wasn't in the initial layout of what it was, but if we wanna go that way, we certainly can. I was focused on your involvement in actually getting, working with whoever's selected and actually guiding their work from the public input and staff, or the commission's standpoint, that's...
And you have a set of guidelines for choosing to correct that one.
And we put it in the bid. Basically, I got on the internet and pulled RFQs from about seven or eight cities across the Midwest, and then looked at the ones that seemed to answer the questions we needed to have answered. Going in, we knew we were gonna have to have a future land use plan, because you don't need to do your streets based upon where no one's gonna be, you have to figure out where the uses are gonna be. So we have to do the future land use plan to drive it. And we need complete streets policy that figures out how that's going to operationally happen. We need a classification system for our streets so that we know this is gonna be a major thoroughfare, this one's gonna be a minor thoroughfare, we need to figure that out. And then we're gonna need, for staff's purposes in the future, an impact study guideline on what are the levels of traffic from a subdivision, or the levels of traffic from a commercial development, or whatever, and how does that trigger off-site improvements? So that we can make sure that if somebody's building here that's in the future land use plan and the road classification is this, they need to build to that standard. So we set all that up in it with them to provide the public element. And the future land use stuff is, you know, 90% driven by this commission, so.
Madam Chairman, if I may also, part of, part of the criteria for your selection, the proposing and selection for your successful vendor would be based upon staff reviewing, people who reviewed that before, and obviously, that would be partially...
And I think in the last meeting in November, I think I provided you all with a copy of the RFQ that was gonna be going out. So it lays out the 35%, 30%, 30%, and then our ordinance and state law requires us to evaluate 5% on whether they're a Missouri-based business. All of them. Every, every proposal we have has companies that have multiple offices in multiple states, all of them include Missouri, so they all base it out of Missouri, so.
I guess my question would be, the five that you've gotten you're gonna review, or staff's going to review, at a minimum, I think this commission should maybe see a spreadsheet of some of that criteria.
Sure, sure.
At, at a minimum, to help us be a little bit more involved in that process.
In the selection, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
And just like what, you know, all, all five, they're all similar here, you know?
Well, and from that standpoint, yeah, it may be, is the project team leader a planner or is it an engineer? That kind of stuff. Because they all have community engagement people, traffic engineers, a project manager that's either an engineer or a land use planner, they have land use planners in it. Some of them have a fairly significant team of community engagement specialists that solely for the purpose of getting public surveys, getting public meetings, all those things associated with taking the citizen and stakeholder involvement. So all of them have varying levels of experience, you know, some of them with...
Well, I guess I can, I'm sure, I think they have issued down there, and so, you know, what factor to make, kind of decision of, you know, they're all very reputable, and hopefully, you know, we'll get, whatever testimonies on each one, so what...
The project understanding and approach portion, it's gotta be, because it's the only part that is kind of flexible and that we can control. We can't control how many engineers they have, or whatever, or what their experience is, but all of them are big-name firms, so they're all gonna be there. It's gonna be their system of how, how we want to provide you the information for, and how they take information and how that works. And their timeline's a part of it as well. So we'll go from that perspective. I think that's gotta be it, because all of them are competent, all of them are highly qualified from the just qualifications experience.
So it's, it's, in my experience with commissions and selections like this, that it's the commission that decides which entity better reflects the, the ideas of the community that we're trying to select for. If, not that there's any ill will on staff's perspective, but staff has one perspective, and we are here because we have kind of a greater perspective for what we see and hear from the greater community. So I would say that, that we should get staff's, staff's input on the decision, on what they think and how, and why, but I think we should also look at all of the applicants and, and make a decision on which ones seem to have, or best reflect what we see as, as our town's future development and design.
I mean, I, and what, it sounds like you're, you're concerned with would be the project understanding and approach. I can craft that stuff up into a spreadsheet easily enough, I mean, I can have it for the February 1st meeting easily enough, and that would be the focus of the meeting, I think. Here's the five different timelines, the five different, I guess, I don't know how to, the understanding of what we're looking for, here's the RFQ, these are the items we're looking for, this is their understanding and approach on delivering it to us. We can go from that perspective and then, that, since that's the, I believe that's the 35% ranking portion, everything else seems to be, from what I can tell, they're all equal on the 30 and 30, because they all have highly qualified engineers, former transportation engineers for states of Kansas, Nebraska, et cetera.
Right, but, but also getting the chance to look at what communities they've served, what, what those communities end up growing like, and getting, getting feedback from, from them as to how satisfied they, those communities were with the service they received.
Well, here's what I will tell you with no uncertain, if you guys wanna do all this work, I'll give it to you. There's, it's a lot of work, and I am busier than hap, I'm more than willing to give all of you all five packets, and you guys come back in February, tell me what to do, I, but...
We would want staff's input, that is critical, but we also want this, the input from us and what we have seen and experienced. So it's, it's not just unloading it on this commission, it's having the commission as an integral part of that decision-making process.
That's up to you all. You guys tell me how you wanna proceed with it.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, I, I agree with that. I think that it's, it would be a more balanced decision if we could all look at. I would think that you would want input from us without us holding anything up, but at the same time, we respect your experience and so forth, so.
Sure, and I don't doubt that, it's just we're trying to decide the scope of what I've gotta present to you from the five applicants that we've got. If it's the whole, yeah, the whole, just providing copies of everything that we have and let you guys evaluate it between now and February, and then go from the recommendation from there, I, we can do that, too.
I have another second. I think the commission needs to play a part. Lock down the process, you know? Things that we wanna ask of it so that we can look at that, and of what you've come up with, go, okay, why? You know, we like the look. Does that fit more with you?
Yes. Sure.
This felt good, and I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, but let's not have us as commissioners do the footwork, the discussion. Obviously, I think it would make sense to, or Jack, or Andrew, Sam, those vendors can say, "Here's, here's what we like about this one, here's what we love, here's staff's recommendation," although, of course, then it goes as for, or this commission. This commission is a recommending commission to Board of Alderman as well. So we, we do not make binding commitments here, but certainly, we do have a recommendation as far as footwork and shit up. I believe that's probably what Mr. Hendricks had been proposing in the presentation, but please provide permission on all of others, and saying, "This is what staff recommended here," and we develop it, because we, we don't want individual commissioners calling different cities saying, "Well, what do you like about this?" We wanna make sure that the concepts are consistent, and make sure that they're represented in an equal opportunity. You want me to say something?
I, I can appreciate the idea of not getting bogged down in the bureaucracy of all that. But if we all bring our, our information to it and get to look at the entire packet, and then also make sure staff gives us their input about what they like or dislike, or whatever about those, then we can assess by us looking at those individual applicants and what staff thinks about it, then make a recommendation. But if we're getting, if we are getting partial information, and we're not sure which information we would have liked to have seen, or didn't get to see, or whatever, then, then we're not able to make a complete decision on who we feel like is probably the best candidate for, for our street planning process. So I, I do believe it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that that happens in a, in as full and complete way as we can with, with working with staff, not, not just telling staff what to do, but hearing from them, and then hearing from all the applicants, and, and assessing all the information that way, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman for, for what, after, after getting all that. And it's maybe more work, but this is, but this is a very long-term project. This is going to affect our town for a long time, so we shouldn't just do it as quickly as we possibly could get it done, but maybe as thoroughly as we can.
Back to what the mayor was saying, you know, I'm definitely going to respect staff's review and decision. I think what I would like to see when I mention a spreadsheet is like the 35% of the project, and then maybe just a synopsis of your inquiries on the references. I think those are the two elements that are the most important for us to look at, like if you could supply those projects section to us ahead of time that we could review before the February meeting, and staff make their recommendation, and that way, we'd have time between, by our next meeting to at least look through the projection part, and if, and, and references, I think are the two most important parts of it.
Sure, and I will tell you, they came in on December 26th, because we were closed on the 22nd. So they came in on the, the 26th, and since the 26th, I've been reading each one of them separately as I go through it, and it's one of those, "Oh, boy, this is gonna be a long process." But, I mean, I, I can, other than the physical taking apart these, by the way, they're all real fancy as well. One of them came in a giant box with this little document in it. But ultimately, the hardest part about getting you the information would be taking them apart, because they're all bound with spiral bindings or, or that kind of stuff, and then photocopying them and sending that information to you, because I can do that in an email with all of the information, or I can, as, as Alderman Wilson just indicated, I can cull it down to, here's their list of projects, here's their, you know, whatever their project's scope is, here's a list of the reference comments from the people I did, you know, call for the references, because each of them have anywhere from five to 10 references listed on the projects. Now, what we won't have, to be quite frank, are the projects that were crappy that they did, and we're confident that there are some of those for every one of them. We won't have those lists, and those are harder to find.
That's what Google is for.
Yeah, yeah. And here's what we know, I'm 100% certain I can find bad work by every one of them, if that's where we're at. Where we gotta go, I think, is into a fashion that gets you guys the information, that allows you to make a recommendation on where to go. This is kind of new territory as it relates to, to these vendor stuff. We tried it, and it seemed to work with the EDC on the marketing, when we did the marketing proposal. In that one, we brought them, there were only three, so it was a little easier, and two of them were darn near identical, so we had a 30, 45-minute discussion over just the two, the top two. So we, we've done that process. This one's gonna be a lot tougher than having two, because we've got five of them with real, real similar proposals.
I just had another thought. Here, I'm sitting here expecting staff, thinking, I'm expecting staff to do this. My thought is, I take a day or an afternoon, and if you don't mind to help walk me through maybe one of them, and then I could just sit in one of the cubbyholes here somewhere and just look through them.
I can, I can, we can strip them apart and copy them, that's easy enough, and I can send it out to all of you, so that you...
Were they able to soft copy to electronic, to PDF, plus?
Yeah, 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 and then you can print it if you want it out. I mean, because some of them are thick, some of them are thin. The good thing for you all is, you won't have all the, or the bad thing is, you won't have all the fancy colors and paper types and all that that they did, because they're trying to impress you. All it does is annoy me, because some of the paper, you know, high bond paper and supercolor and glossy, no, I just need the data. So we can do that just as easily, and allow you to, to go along that, that front.
I think what we're saying here overall is, we would like to be a little bit more involved.
Okay.
With the process.
Sure.
How soon could you do something? Like packets and different stuff, maybe I'm looking at the phone first.
The copy, yeah, we can get the, we can get the copied stuff, we can get them stripped apart and copied in, by Monday, get them out.
Yeah, because, yeah, understand it's gonna take you to go through this stuff.
Right.
And I, I think also, this is what I'm rating, or how I'm rating, and seeing how we all compare.
And, well, the good thing is, how I'm going to rate them is what you guys approved in November. 30%, here's what the factors are, we're going through that, and I'll send that out with them as well. That's the, I asked them to submit a bid in tabs using these, what we're going to vote on, or what are, how we're gonna rank them, so that it'll be easier to understand, easier to calculate, and go from that stand...
I assume you had some way of...
Yeah, right, other one, since, especially since we're not gonna be talking about money until we make the selection. Then we have to go negotiate. And if we can't get, you know, if somebody comes in with a $250,000, we can't go any below that, it's not gonna happen. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, that's well over any reasonably anticipatable budget. But we'll see where, who we have, and then we start, we'll do a negotiation that scopes out exactly how their work happens, and a regular contract at that point. We've identified our, our recommended person, and we'll go try to get a contract and get it to the board.
He's, he's welcome. She, um, still, of course, Jack. And then, an opportunity to see if we all agree to the same...
That's, that's working in the right direction. I just wonder if it's going to be a few days before the copying happens, if we want to see the packet as presented, are they available where?
I have one copy, before I take them apart, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can...
You said they're presented in such a way that they were trying to impress us.
Yeah.
But it would be, it's a little bit telling about what kind of company they are.
Yeah.
I would say, with Jack.
Yeah, because I've only got the one copy of them.
Right.
So, yeah.
And again, I think we do, we, I feel like have to trust in our staff also, and the information.
That can, you'll get it, you'll get five different emails Monday, or six, it'll be six, because I'll, my guess, my guess is the documents will be, PDFs will be too large to put multiple on, I would suspect, but we'll see. But yeah, I'll send them out. You guys have the, have the fun job of looking at them like I'm looking at them, and then I will certainly have the reference checks done.
I would also like to indicate, though, if you have questions on them and things, I think you should note. I don't think we should bombard Jack with, you know, 50,000 questions, you know, you have 10 questions on this one, and you have 10 on that one, and you have 10, and 10, and, you know, he's going to spend all his time answering each of us, because I'm sure we're going to have questions. So I do feel like maybe we should just note our questions, and have those ready, and then ask those at our next meeting.
Yeah. And, well, there's two reasons for that, why that's a good idea. Number one, if we're sending out emails like that, everybody here sends an email in where everybody else is involved, what's the answer to this? We're conducting a meeting, not in public, and not subject to public comment. So, get your questions together, and if it's a question that you need to have answered so that you can actually understand something, certainly send that to me individually as an email, and I'll reply it with the best information I can give you. But, you know, the back-and-forth stuff, we don't, we need to avoid that as a public body in Missouri, we don't want to do an email meeting.
And I like to just, I like to reflect beside that fact that oftentimes elected officials will just email blast everybody regarding some issues, and then they'll start responding to other issues, and that's violation of sunshine law. And sunshine law does apply to any elector or running commissioner board, including this one.
Yeah, so...
So, see, you have some question now, along that same line, I think it's wise to hold some of our questions, but some of the questions we need to get from Jack ahead of time, so he may have, he takes some time to get them answered, or to get answers back, because at our next meeting, if we bombard Jack with such questions, and said, "Well, it's going to take another month to get answers," he'd go, "Oh."
And that may be, because my guess is, your questions are going to come closer to February 1 than they will the next couple of weeks, because it'll take you a while to digest it all. But if, I would agree with the mayor, if you can individually send me questions that you would like to, you'll be throwing out, potentially for me to answer, it gives me the ability to hopefully have an answer. If I don't know what it is when it's asked, it means I'm going to be sitting here trying to look it up, or it delays us another month. If I get those questions, when I send out the packet for the February meeting, we can go from there. Now, at this point in time, I don't believe any of the applicants I mentioned, not in this, but in the submissions for subdivision approval or like, I don't think any of them are going to meet the deadline to have an application on for the next meeting, which means we'll have one meeting to pretty much focus on this. Otherwise, we may want to consider a special meeting. If I get two applications or three applications by Tuesday of next, Wednesday of next week, they're all going to be on the agenda, and we'll be scrambling, so, and it'll be a long meeting. But right now, it looks as though we're not going to have any applications on, so it'll just be this issue. Don't want to jinx it.
Any other staff or issues?
Nope.
Maybe all of them, has there been other comments? Here, and then, move on to the street renaming presentation.
Um, as you may recall, from our November meeting as well, we had two streets that we were going to do a competition on because of the new acquisition of the city of several streets, excuse me, several highways, state highways, and kind of realigning things to address proper street names, so that Second and First Street don't line up with each other like they do up north, we'll have to do some of those names. Most of them were resolved, but the areas that weren't was the portion of F Highway, where it intersects with Maple, over by the Housing Authority, and starts going north. That one kind of needs a name, and that was in the competition. And the other one was that block and a half, block and three-quarters of the portion of Bridge and Woodland Court, north of the spur and F Highway intersection, needed to be renamed. If you recall, Mike had indicated, because that Bridge Street, Woodland Court was such a small thing, we would probably focus the response and the contest just to those residents, because most folks don't even, have never been up there, know what it's about or anything, and it's kind of limited. But the other one is going to be a major road for the city. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to present to you, have this competition, contest, whatever you want to call it, on Facebook, and Mike has been out to the neighborhoods, knocked on doors, talked to folks. So, he's got two different things to present to you as it relates to the competition, and one of which I think we're recommending...
We have a final recommendation for Bridge and Woodland, yeah. I actually just, just went out tonight at about 6:15, so right before this meeting, to get the last couple of ballots from the residents of those two streets. And I came back and crunched the numbers, had them do a preferential ballot, because we did have two street names that came directly from residents on that street, and we had about seven or eight other names that came through Facebook that were specific to those areas. And so I let them choose from all the names that were specific to their area, and after crunching the numbers, it appears that the residents there, eight of the 11 houses, eight voted, two abstained, and one simply wasn't present, unfortunately. I tried to contact them a month and a half ago, and they weren't there, and I tried to contact them this week, and they weren't there. So, with those eight votes out of the 11, however, the clear winner as far as the ranking was the name Hilltop, which is very applicable. That suggestion actually did come from one of the residents as well, so I'm not surprised that they voted for one of those. If we follow the traditional naming conventions in Missouri, that would be a street, but that's not inherently what we have to follow as far as the suffix. If we don't like what Hilltop Street sounds like, we can certainly choose a different suffix for it. But my recommendation to this commission for putting forward to the board would be that the section of North Bridge Street and Woodland Court be renamed Hilltop per the residents' request. The other item that we, the other part of the contest that we did, as Jack indicated, was for Highway F between Maple and what's now becoming 182nd.
172nd.
172nd, so. So that's that north, north-south, roughly north-south stretch of Highway F. We actually had 13 names suggested there, only two of them received more than one vote. We actually had a few more than that suggested, but some of them were names that already exist in the city, or that were of individuals who are still alive, that sort of thing, names that generally aren't considered appropriate for this sort of setting. Jack, did you provide them with a list of those names, or no?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so, I've got all 13 names here. I sort of want to leave it up to this commission whether you'd like to vote for the names directly, or whether you would simply like to pass on the two that did receive multiple votes, or that sort of issue. A number of them are, have very interesting backgrounds, some of them are certainly very meaningful to the area. Personally, I would suggest, looking at all 13, I don't think it will be that difficult. And again, we could do either a preferential ranking, or a simple, you know, this is my vote, and see if one comes out on top. Does the commission have any preference on that? I can give you the names right now if you'd like.
Do we want to figure out, first off, do we want to figure out how you guys want to vote, or do you want to have the names, then figure out how you want to vote?
Well, the names and then figure out.
Sure, sure. The suggested names, the two that were suggested more than once were Spellman, after Dr. Spellman, and Yankee, after our founder's nickname. The other suggestions included Green Wave, which was the original mascot, Jefferson, because that used to be a section of Jefferson Highway, Ladoga, because of the winery, Mansion, because of the mansion that's out on F Highway, Morel, because apparently this is good Morel hunting area, I actually was not aware of that, Nature View, because it leads into the lake and the park, Overlook, because you can see the lake and it's a good vantage point, Sportsman, because of Dr. Weldon's Sportsman, who helped founded, helped found the Gashlin Clinic, Turkey Hill, because apparently there's always turkeys out in that field, Vantage Point, again, similar to Overlook, and Winters, in honor of Jerry Winters, the sheriff, who has a house, had a house on Highway F as well. So those were the 13 suggestions.
The top two.
The ones that were suggested twice were Spellman and Yankee. Those each received two suggestions from residents, all the others just received one, so.
I have one more question. How many total, how many total submissions were made for existing F Highway and also...
This is the F Highway.
How many, how many total submissions were...
Between the two of them, combined?
Well, I just, first of all, for F Highway.
F, well, F had 13 that were eligible, that met the criteria, again, non-living, less than 14 letters, didn't conflict with another street already in the city, that sort of thing. So there's 13 for Highway F, and there were nine and write-in for Bridge and Woodland.
And you, okay, these were the submissions, and it was only the people that lived in the area that then voted?
Well, for Bridge and Woodland, the people that voted were the people that lived there. We thought it made the most sense to let them vote on their own name, because that stretch of street is relatively small, and because many of them have lived there for quite a few years, if we have to do a rename, they should at least own part of that. For Highway F, since that's a major thoroughfare, we took suggestions from any resident of Smithville, so so long as they had a Smithville address, and didn't, and they submitted an eligible name, they went on to the list, so.
So, anyone from Smithville, but I guess, I didn't see it.
We posted it, we posted it on Facebook, on Instagram, on Twitter, and we mentioned it in a number of meetings, including the planning and zoning for November, so.
And sure.
We didn't take votes for Highway F, we just took suggestions, right.
We wanted you guys to make the decision.
Right, since that one's a major thoroughfare, the assumption was that that needs to go a bit above just the handful of people that live along Highway F. So, much as we would like them to enjoy the name of the road, it's a little bigger than that at that point, so, so we assume that the commission would want some...
If I may, we kind of crafted that after how the school did their naming for all their schools. They took the votes, or took the submissions from all the public, and then they had a committee sit down and boil down, and then make a recommendation on to the full board. You're our committee.
That I don't know. The reason, the reason given in the submission, because we let them put in comments for why they felt it was an important name, was related to the winery. There may be some further significance there that I'm unaware of.
And I think the winery named it because of a Native American tribe in the area somewhere.
Okay, but that is kind of where I was wondering if it had a name for...
Yeah, and that's, my understanding was there was a Native American tie to the region, not the ridge.
Got it, okay. What discussion there on some of the names?
Well, I'm prepared to vote whenever you're ready. Well, first off, we need to get you the procedure you guys want to use, now that we've got the names out. Can you send that to me again?
It's good.
I'll go print it, so they'll have it before.
Run through the list one more time.
Sure. Actually, he's sending this to me, so I can go back to my desk and print it, and then you guys will have printed copies of the names.
I thought that's why I was sending it the first time.
It was.
But yeah, while he's printing that, I can go ahead and give you the names in case, because I saw a lot of you scrambling to write them, so if you need to fill in your list. Spellman, Yankee, Green Wave, Jefferson, Ladoga, Mansion, Morel, Nature View, Overlook, Sportsman, Turkey Hill, Vantage Point, and Winters were the 13 eligible suggestions. Under the 911 rules, it can't be more than two words or 14 letters, and then the general sort of rule of thumbs is it's not considered apropos to name it after a living individual, unless there's an extreme circumstance, you know, a local hero, that sort of thing.
Overdrive or something.
Right, something like that. So, so yeah, it's, and then the only other one, of course, if it duplicates a name already in existence, or if it's phonetically the same as, or too similar to another.
There is a little liberty, there have to be two streets in Liberty called Forest Avenue, one spelled with L R, and one spelled with Q R. And here in Smithville, we have a Liberty Street and a Liberty Road.
Right. We also have a Woodland Avenue and a Woodland Court, which was part of why Woodland and Bridge were chosen to go ahead and receive a name change.
So, so obviously, I think it's important that we, as we review this, we do something that will be significant to our review, something that people will have an opportunity to call. That's why it's named this, so.
And that's, that's one of, that was one of the qual, the, that's one of the pieces we asked for when people submitted a name, was why is this important to you? We did have a few submissions that didn't have an explanation, or it was from a video game they liked, or something like that. There were, there were a very small number that, as staff, we disqualified because they weren't actually significant to our area. But by and large, if a resident submitted it, and we could verify a Smithville address, it went on the list, so.
Do they have a name?
It is, unfortunately. It is, unfortunately. Oh yeah, Old Rock Lane? That could be a great one.
So as a committee, if you all want to do this, do you want to go down and go yea-nay on everyone of 13? Do you want to make the top two or three? How would you prefer to do this?
If I could, Chairwoman?
Yes.
I would suggest one of two methodologies. Either rank all of them, one through 13, and I can actually go punch those into the computer, and within a few minutes, we can have a, a top, however many you want to pass on to the board, or the top that you want to recommend, or go down and simply, yea-nay, we want this to go on to the board as an option. If there's enough, if there's enough overlap, we can definitely do that.
Yeah.
Right, if we, if there's enough overlap, we can definitely...
And that will happen much quicker.
What, what is that rating?
Just put one, two, and three by your, your top pick, your second pick, and your third pick.
First choice, second choice, third choice.
And then I'll, when you guys are done, I'll come back.
I, I do want to make a comment on the second.
Yes.
Like that.
Yankee, yes. Does have some connotations, yes.
Yes.
And, and I was aware of that, but again, because it is significant to the, to the city, and because it came from a, from a resident, I wanted to at least put that as an available name, as an available suggestion to the commission. If you choose, if you decide that the, the potential connotation is, is reason enough, completely understandable.
Again, this is very...
Right, and that's a situation that we probably could, it's two words and it's less than 14 letters, so it, it probably would be eligible as Yankee Smith. Right.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know if that would still...
I think it would still...
I just want to do...
Right.
Yeah.
The other, I mean...
That's up to the commission, so.
You know, I don't know, I know that Ladoga is because of some of the history, as you said, but again, I think that could have some connotations, and I do feel that Mansion would, I mean, you know, the mansion's always been there, but if we're, I, who feels that? You know, one person may say that's Mansion, one person may not, I don't know, so, so those are just a couple of my...
So rank your top three, when you're done, go like that, and I'll come together, and Micah will take them back, and we will, the rest of the, we can actually go on to the next project, or next item on the agenda, and then make sure you know which ones are marked.
Also, Chairman, we may want to consider recommending for all of them, probably top one, and then perhaps two or three.
They will have full access, the minutes and movements of that list, the partner minutes, very much that a copy. The minutes will just say the name, not the history background.
Right.
Is there anything else you need from us on, it just sounds like Hilltop, the winner?
Hilltop is my recommendation for, for the first set.
Or does that go to the ultimate as far as Hilltop?
That's your decision, if you want to put that as your direct recommendation to the board, that would be my suggestion.
My suggestion would be, that's, that one's staff's recommendation, based upon what the residents of those two, or that street with two names wanted. So that's what we're recommending for that one. When this evaluation's done, I'd ask that you, he'll give you the numbers, and then you guys make a recommendation on both of them to move forward with the board. But we'll do that following the next item on the agenda. It's going to take him three, four, five minutes to evaluate, evaluate, we'll go through the next request item, and then about the time that's done, come back and make an official recommendations. We will, what's the official motion there to move this item to the back end?
It's just something that the chairman can do, that we, just be action on this item, and post all the details after a little bit.
Is there a right to yet?
Everyone's in, I'll return shortly.
Okay, so we will postpone the renaming contest information until later in the meeting. We're going to go ahead and vote forward with the street vacation request while the others do the files.
You have before you an 11 by 17 screenshot of the area we're talking about. This land where, where the road of North Holmes and 145th are, by the way, where 145th ends on your picture, it actually ends, it just goes out there and stops. It doesn't go through, it ends, and it's all on this one parcel, one landowner involved in all of this. If you look in the bottom center of the photograph where you can see North Holmes Road is written, and then you see the red line coming down, that's based upon a recent survey, the property that's in the outline of red there, it was recently acquired by the people on the right, that property on the right. In 1987 or 88, they report that the fence, there was a gate put across the road by them, the owners at the time, and then a year or two, or maybe longer, we're not, in any event, it annexed into the city with a, North Holmes and 145th with their gate on it to keep their cows in, so they were gated, gating off a public street. The city has never considered it a street, when it came in, there was a gate on it, at that time, they just assumed it was not a public street. When GIS came out, they started digitizing stuff, and we started looking, we realized this is dedicated as a public street, it was never properly vacated by the county before it came in, maybe there's an issue here. And for the last five or six years, we've been in various stages of discussion with the property owner, who's wanted to eliminate it as a street, or have the city take it over and maintain it, because there's a bridge on part of it. It was, that bridge was never in the city inventory, MoDOT does that inventory, not us, and it was never a bridge listed by MoDOT as a bridge, so we, we don't consider it a road from the way we act. In any event, we couldn't vacate it until just recently, in June, the property owners acquired the stuff in red, and they acquired roughly where you see the creek going north off of 145th Street. There was an easement granted by the property involved to property north of there to get access to a piece of ground that couldn't be accessed anywhere other than off of 145th. We could not vacate it, because we would have then created an isolated parcel that would have no access off a public road, and would have subjected the city to a lawsuit, and we would have lost, so we wouldn't do it. They've now acquired all those rights to that, all the property, so all that stuff is now merged, it's no longer an issue. So what we were left with was identifying a method to vacate the road and keep this parcel, or their land, in compliance with their zoning code. Number one, it's zoned A1, so it has to have 300 foot of frontage. It's fortuitous that they acquired the little red triangle over here as well, because it's 272 feet long. If you measure that 272 feet, and cut the road off square where they've had it cut off for, going on 30 years now, a 50-foot ride road plus 272 feet gives us over 300 feet. So based upon that, staff is recommending that you consider vacating at that property line, it gives them 300 feet of frontage, but condition it upon them submitting a, what's called a boundary line adjustment, or a lot line adjustment, we created that process some time ago, that doesn't have to come to you all, but it allows them to merge two lots into one, and it will then eliminate that boundary line between the two, creating a bigger parcel that has 330, 312 or 20 feet of frontage, meets all of our zoning code, they get to go back to where they, they had it before, and ultimately, the question for you all is whether or not vacating that street is in the best interests of the city. And my point to you is, it's been, there's been a cattle gate and fence across it for 30-plus years, so that's where we're sitting.
So they own all of this?
Except for, i-if you're looking at this, this is obviously north-southeast-west as you're looking at it, they own everything north of the orange line, which is the right-of-way line, and right side of the, the second red line, the farthest west red line, they own all of that, so 100% of the property that we're, or the road that we're vacating is inside the limits of their property, and no one else, it touches no one else. That's why we didn't have to go through this huge process of, it, and some of you may have been here when we vacated several streets about three or four years ago, we had to notify all the property owners, because there were multiple, multiple property owners that had to do it. The request here was made by the property owner, and they own all the land around it, so it gets a lot easier for us in that scenario. They didn't even need to appear, because all they want is the road to be vacated, so.
I have a question. If we vacate this road, Jack, and continue upon the merging it all into one lot, the owners then want to develop that and involve his family, some division, they would then have to follow the rules of property.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would affect, they would, that, that would make it possible then, by doing this, so they could do something like that if they so chose?
Certainly, certainly, and they're aware of that fact, it's just I don't know that they're in that position or wanting to do it, but from a long-term comprehensive plan stuff, and looking back, the reason the road turned here and went north and kind of jagged through is 145th Street, is because the wooded area you see is a very tall hill, and they had to cross two different creeks areas years ago, when this was out in the unincorporated county years ago, and at 145th Street, there's a bridge, but it goes out and just dead-ends, so at some point, even when it was a county road, the portion from the edge of this parcel all the way back through the thule bushes and hooked back up to 144th over on the Virginia side, that's been gone for, as a public road for a long time, even before any of it came into the city. So this is just a remnant, for whatever reason, wasn't resolved legally by the county before it came into the city, so.
Is it a condition, a bridges or anything, or even, ever even drivable?
No, they're drivable, at least from the amount of traffic that they drive across it, I'm sure, every day, because their house is the, they have to drive across it to get to their house.
Oh, yeah.
And I believe that's, they had to cross that bridge to access the property with the harvesting equipment, so, but it's getting, you know, four trips a day, or six trips a day for the bridge for the last 30 years, instead of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, so.
And I would guess that would then remain a private bridge, which the city would have no responsibility for.
Right.
And so the city then would have the responsibility to clean this?
And there's a gate, we don't have keys to it. That gate's still there.
Just be a real long drive.
Yeah, that's what it has been since it came into the city 30, 29 or 30 years ago, it was either 87 or 88 exactly, don't know. So to clarify, and on the bottom of it, oh, sorry. Staff's recommendation is that the, that the 100, North Holmes Road and 145th Street, as it's identified on this parcel here, be vacated as public thoroughfares conditioned upon the merger of the lots that we're talking about. I was hopeful to have that document in advance of this meeting, I didn't want to delay the, the property owners, I don't have that document yet, so.
It's what has not been merged?
It hasn't been merged, but my recommendation to you is that you condition the vacation of this until we get them merged to make it legal. That document should be here shortly, I would think. So as soon as I get the document, we take it to the board for a resolution vacating that street.
Do I have a motion?
You've got to push through this.
Right, there was discussion, questions?
Has there been a motion? Okay, okay.
That we prove this petition with the understanding or with the condition of that it merged those two properties into one?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Turn those local issues apart.
Aye.
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 We will take it to the board with that recommendation, as soon as I get that document, as soon as it delivers. Thank you all on that, and it looks like Micah's back in the room, so my guess is he has a tally completed.
Okay, we will go back, Micah, can you come back and give us our answers on what we vote?
Sure. Since we weren't voting on the entire list, and some people voted for things that nobody else did, I used a method called reciprocal voting, which looks at how many votes for each were given, and also whether it was a higher vote or a lower vote, so. Do you want the top two or the top three, because it gets messy at the third one?
You can top four.
Okay. The, the number one by far was Spellman, with three first votes and, and one second-place vote. The second was Nature View. The third is Vantage Point, it had lower votes, but it had more of them, so reciprocally, it comes out higher. And then fourth would be a tie for Overlook and Yankee Smith. And again, under the naming conventions, technically, that would be a drive, because it's circilinear, meaning it's not entirely straight, it does have curves to it, and it's over 1,000 feet, but again, the suffixes aren't law, that's just the traditional convention, so.
So are you agreeing with that, the first choice?
The, the highest, the highest vote was Spellman, then Nature View, then Vantage Point, and then a tie for Overlook and Yankee Smith.
I am by all concern with Spellman was that people want Spellman, saying, you know, and that they would be going first.
Is the Memorial Highway, and that was something I considered as well.
So now we've got two things.
I will say, when you type it in in Google though, it, I mean, if you type Spellman Memorial, it doesn't bring anything up.
And, and that FYI, that is a memorial name created by the Spellman Foundation, related to the memory of, what was it, his 100th?
Arch Spellman.
Arch Spellman's 100th birthday, I think, they requested it, they paid for the sign and state put it up, they just needed the city to say, can we name it the Memorial Highway for him?
But yeah, it's not a, it's not a formal name that shows up anywhere else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept these four, and move them forward to Alderman?
Or do you guys, you guys can actually make the call. That would be an option as well.
Make a motion that we select the number-one ranking as the top candidate for naming of that street.
I'll wholeheartedly second that.
Second question?
So the motion is for Spellman Drive?
This motion, the motion is for Drive to be the one that gets passed on to the Board of Alderman?
Yes. Stephen Rand.
Roll call. There's more?
Aye.
Aye.
Woodland?
Aye.
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 The second matter would be then, the other street.
Hilltop.
On the matter concerning Woodland and the bridge?
Woodland Court and North Bridge.
North Bridge.
No, Bridge.
Right, North Bridge.
Yes, yes. Yes.
And to change the name of that to Hilltop, is there, we need a motion to accept Hilltop, and then do, is it decided Hilltop Drive?
Like I said, the convention is street, if the commission or the Board of Aldermen, either one, has a different preference, that's certainly doable, that's just the convention.
Chairman, I agree that we recommend the Board of Aldermen change it to Hilltop Street.
Second.
Discussion? I think Hilltop Drive is better.
Hilltop, we got these. Court, it's got a turn, it's got a cul-de-sac.
Standing for has to have more houses than one house.
Was it? Yeah, that's what I thought. I knew there was a reason why Court wasn't rolling out, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
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 We will make that recommendation to the board. Just so you understand the procedure on that process, we have to go through a notification process of all the property owners that have property that abut on all of these things, to let them know that within thirty, that thirty days after the letter goes, that they receive the letter, the name will officially change, so, and we'll present to the Board of Aldermen, if you move to change the name, make it effective thirty days after that date, so that it, it gives a delay time, so that if there is truly something that no one has told us, other than I don't like it, that would cause this to be inappropriate, they can, they have notice to bring that to the Board of Aldermen. That notice will actually identify the deadline that it has to be received, otherwise it will change. That letter also includes copies of every one of them, because there's going to be a bunch of them, copies of the same letter that go out to every, the phone company, the cable companies, the gas company, the electric company, everybody that services it, it goes out to Inrad, the fire district, Platte County Dispatch, who handles it, it goes down to market, their nine-one-one addressing folks, it goes to the Clay County sheriffs as well, so all kinds of people. I think there are fourteen, fifteen copies of the letter that we send out for all of these folks, so that everybody knows that addressing has changed. And we have had, for a long time in Smithville, problems with mailing address versus situs address. Situs address is what the county has your property's address as, it's what's on the nine-one-one addressing guide. When the nine-one-one stuff became law in Missouri and everybody had to do it, that's when you have northeast, or northwest, and all those street naming conventions that we're talking about, they all go into the nine-one-one addressing guide, and they create this massive computer program that allows all these folks to get it, and then, that service address is what all the utilities use. We've been having problems with our post office getting, not putting the northeast on or whatever, depending on what information they got from the city twenty years ago, or fifteen years ago, so we're still working through that with MSAG on a daily basis, almost. Brandy and I regularly get questions or comments, and so this process is probably going to be sixty days or more before it actually activates, but what our goal is to have all of them activated at the same time. Right, and, yeah, and ultimately, when it does, then, once it activates, we notify the Clay County Assessors GIS, and they go through and change all the street names in accordance with the descriptions we give them, so...
Would that also include Recorder's Office, Jack?
No, no, the Recorder's Office doesn't have, right. One of the biggest concerns folks have is that their, their deed will be at the wrong place, and I've had to explain to them, your deed, if it's given to you based upon your address, you have a defective deed anyway, it's got to be based on a legal description, lot whatever, in this subdivision, and sometimes in legal descriptions or on documents you'll see, also known as twenty-one, thirty-two, south, whatever, but the actual address is not subject to your deed at all. So we handle in-house notification of street name changes, and I got this directly from Clay County's Planning and Zoning, they do it all the time, too. When development occurs on some of their old stuff, they, street names will change, and when they do it, I send it to everybody. Yes, yes, they'll have to pass a resolution, and, and we have the name of Spellman, Hilltop, part of first is going to go to second, part of F is going to go to first. If you recall, we had all those, those issues. Part of F up north will become Hundred and Seventy-Second, and it will break it at the corner there of where Pope Lane goes north. That's when it starts headed east, so that's going to be a hundred, so we've got to get all those things identified, mapped out, described, and then get letters out. Oh, and the spur is going to become Bridge Street, so we'll be able to have Bridge Street signs on one-sixty-nine that bring people from that direction, headed south, directly into downtown. All of those traditional things, because that was the original lane, that's the way it always used to go, but as they developed, they added Bridge Street North, because it lined up with Bridge Street, and just got a little confused.
Bus companies included in that?
Yeah, and for them, it won't change, because the mailboxes aren't moving, they're just going to get different, some of them are going to have different numbers as well, by the way. For example, all of the houses that are behind Discount Liquor and Smokes, they're all numbered on the even, but they're on the east side of the road, and my suspicion is, they were numbered evenly because across the street was an odd number, but it's an odd number on the street on the other side of it. On the right side of the road, when you're headed north, those are supposed to be odd and even, but they named, those were all numbered even because there was an odd number across the street, but it was just odd address on the, two-nineteen North one-sixty-nine highway, not the spur, so we'll be changing some of those. The rest of them, all, from my evaluation, all of them meet standard addressing conventions from a number standpoint, other than those three homes. So we'll, we'll address that at that time.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Voice vote on adjourn, if you want.
Voice vote, all papers, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed names?
Thank you, guys. As you know, we're swamped in the CIP sales tax, and the, I forgot to mention that to you all. There will be a ballot question, I forgot to mention it to you all, for a new sales tax.